TV says we're ready to go. It's, uh, 7:30 and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Here.
Beazer.
Here.
Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunick.
Here.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bede.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Erickson.
Motion by Erickson.
Second.
Is there a second by Stengline? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the vote, the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, we are officially underway. Item six is the annual presentation by the center. Come on up, state your name and address. Let us know what you have.
Kathy Tusa, 14075 Firewood Drive, Baxter. I am president of the board of the center.
Deanne Berry, 18610 Smith Road, Brainerd, Director of the Center. I will get you guys, if you don't mind, to pass those. The letter is kind of an explanation, a report of how the center has used and is using the funds we received from the city of Brainerd according to our agreement. I apologize that it was not part of your packet. We weren't aware that it needed to be in on Thursday. So if you have questions following tonight, don't hesitate to call or email. Our financials are two months prior, so the numbers we have used are from August, the comparisons. If you read through the letter, the impressive numbers are volunteer hours, our individual users. We do lots of good things, and I can say that. It's not a prideful thing coming from me. We have hundreds of volunteers who give thousands of hours. We have a wonderful board of directors that Kathy is here as a representative of. That's how we do fabulous things. So stop and check us out if you haven't had a tour. The second sheet is a preliminary budget. It's preliminary because our bylaws state our budget needs to be approved by our members at our annual meeting. That is the third Thursday in November. So if you are available on Thursday, November 17th, at 1:00, come and join us. That's our annual meeting. It's where you can meet our board of directors, our members, meet new board members, and kind of find out how we are reporting to our members as well. Any questions, Sonny?
Any questions?
We do have a short presentation that Kathy and I would like you to view.
Yes, absolutely.
Wait, 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 wait. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You gonna send to us?
We are the voice for aging in our community.
We are learning, defensive driving, painting classes, lunch and learn programs.
We are supportive, telecare program for the shut-ins, prayer quilters, toy makers.
We are healthy, lifestyle classes, bone builders, healthy vents.
We are active, walking, biking, exercise rooms, chair yoga.
We are artists, painters, authors, theater, and a choir.
We are gamers, bridge, mahjong, bingo, cribbage.
We are friends, so- socialization and dinners.
We are neighbors, volunteering, carpooling.
We are musicians, the center's band and the center's choir.
We are fundraisers, donuts, plant sale, craft sales.
We are civic-minded, a polling site, taxpayers and voters.
We are merchants, gift shop, supporting Brainerd businesses.
We are community, visiting and singing at nursing homes and senior facilities, performances in the park.
We are readers, monthly book club, lobby library.
We are athletes, golf, pickleball and tennis.
We are vital. Creativity does not die with old age.
We are the voice for aging in our community.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anybody have any comments or questions for the seniors at center? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you're back in the corner over there, there are some seats over on this side. You can go out and come in. We're glad you're here. All right, next up is item seven, to conduct a dangerous dog hearing. I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney, Langle, to give us a brief view.
Good evening, Mr. President, counsel. So tonight we have dangerous dog hearing. This dog was found to be potentially dangerous three years ago when it bit another dog. On October 21 of this year, there was another alleged incident with this dog and the neighbor's dog, where this dog by the name of Lily was determined to have attacked the neighbor's dog. Animal Control Officer O'Brien determined based upon that information that the dog, Lily, is a dangerous animal. Under the city code and state law, the owner of the dog has the right to appeal that determination that the dog is dangerous. And the owner did submit an appeal for that. So what we've got tonight is an evidentiary hearing by the city council to affirm or deny the determination made by Mr. O'Brien. And the way that this works is that each side of this issue will have an opportunity to present to the council the facts on the dog. So Mr. O'Brien will present his evidence first concerning the alleged attack, and then the dog owner will have the opportunity to present his evidence. The council has the opportunity to ask questions of the people who are testifying. Now, once the testimony is complete, the council can discuss the matter and make a motion as to where the Lily is in fact a dangerous dog. If there is a determination the dog is dangerous, then the next issue that the council has to consider is what to do with the dog. And under the city code and under state law, you have a number of options. One is euthanization of the dog. Another is to allow the dog to remain, but under a number of various conditions that are contained in the city code and under state law. There's a laundry list of different things that can be imposed upon the dog owner. Or if the owner has some other idea, the council can consider that as well. So that's where we're at. I would ask the council to go ahead and start the hearing, starting with Animal Control Officer O'Brien.
Thank you. Any questions of the attorney on the procedure? Hearing none. Mr. O'Brien, we will start the hearing. State your name and address, please, since we're on TV.
Excuse me. Michael O'Brien. I live in Breezy Point, 9183 First Avenue. On this one, I don't have a whole lot more to add than just the basic facts. I was, it was on the 21st. It was MEA weekend. I was out of town with my family, so I didn't respond initially. The Brainerd Police Department did. You have the report from Officer Johnson, I'm assuming. He filled me in, and then I just did the follow-up investigation. And I knew that we had had an initial incident or a previous incident with this dog. And when I pulled up all the reports, excuse me, in 2019, this same dog was, and their other dog, one other dog that they have, was both declared potentially dangerous. He was duly served that notice. I have paperwork that he signed off on that. And one of the standards for a dog to be declared a dangerous dog is, on the above date, after said dog had been found to be potentially dangerous and the owner was duly notified, said dog aggressively bit, attacked, or endangered the safety of humans or domestic animals. I don't know if you guys have the video. There's actually a video of this incident. I don't know if you guys have seen it or not, but it's pretty clear what happens. The dog, Lily, the dog in question, comes onto the neighbor's property, chases victim dogs' owners, whatever you would call it, around a tree a couple of times. You can clearly hear that it bites it. You have a picture. It's got two puncture wounds on its hip. Other than that, I mean, it's not disputable. I mean, it's undisputed. There's an issue with the video in that there's some profanity involved, so. Other than that, I just, I don't have any more to add.
Okay. We have not seen the video as a council. I don't know if any of you have seen it.
I have it on my phone.
Yes, Administrator Bergman.
Mr. Chair, we do have the video, and we were able to bleep out the profanity. So we do have it available, if that is something the council would like to do.
Let's ask the council. If you'd like to see the video, raise your hand. I'd like to see it.
Not opposed to it.
So far, we are not, we only have three people who want to see the video. So we're not gonna see the video. Okay. All right, any questions of our dog officer and what is happening here? Okay? That's it. Thank you for coming. Now, from the dog owner's side, is there anybody who wishes to speak? Who are you pointing to? City Attorney Langle? Or Administrator?
Was the dog, the dog that was attacked, is that owner online?
I believe she's on WebEx or whatever you guys call it.
Okay, all right. Before I turn it over to the dog owner, can you tell me, is the dog, can you come back to the microphone? I apologize.
No, I'm sorry.
My question is, is the dog in custody now?
Lily's owners are highly uncooperative. They won't even tell us where the dog is at this point. They have alleged that it may be at the daughter's boss's house down by Motley. We have reports that it's been seen on their property twice. I've been there a few times, and they're not willing to produce it, even for photographs.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, online, if you are the dog owner or representing the dog owner, Sarah, I guess you are representing the dog owner or are the dog owner, if you wish to unmute and speak, push star six. Sarah, and then we'll, there you are. And you're not the dog owner, your dog was attacked?
Both of my dogs, yes. I have a labradoodle named Rico. He was the one that was attacked a couple of weeks ago. And I have a Yorkie named Louis. He was attacked three, three years ago. And Louis was close to being dead from that attack. Actually, he was wearing a little puffer vest that that claimed saved his life.
Okay. Anything else?
We've had repeated instances of his dogs coming onto our property and being very aggressive with our labradoodle. None of them resulted in injuries except for this last incident, when the police were called. So, but it's a known, it's a known issue of his dogs coming onto our property and attacking our dogs.
Okay, anything else?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, any questions of Sarah? Okay, thank you, Sarah, for testifying.
Thank you.
Anybody else representing the dog owner or have a comment? Doesn't appear to be online or in the courtroom, so I guess we will close the dangerous dog hearing and ask if anybody on the council has a recommendation as to where we, how we proceed. I can, I have the five choices, but we don't have to follow them. Mr. Langle, it would be all right if I read this? I don't think everybody got this. The by statute, that RR statute, the dangerous dog, says we first must deem it is dangerous or isn't.
Motion to deem the dog dangerous.
Second, Johnson.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Johnson. Any discussion by the council? Any discussion by the council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next up is what to do. Anything from a proper enclosure, notifying residents with warning signs on the premises, showing public liability insurance and the minimum of $300,000? Euthanization is one of them. Also, muzzling and chains. Any, and we don't necessarily have to follow those, but that's what's in our ordinance, correct, Mr. Langle?
Yeah, Mr. President, council. So your ordinance talks about deciding whether to euthanize it. If decision is not to euthanize it, then it's a question of what requirements to put into play. And there is, like you indicated, a laundry list of them, both in your code and under state law, a copy of which is in the packet. So there is a number of things that can be done there.
And it's up on the screen.
And it's up on the screen.
But we also don't have the dog, as we heard our animal control officer say.
Correct. At this point, the dog is not in custody.
Okay, but, okay. Chairman Johnson, you had your hand up.
I make a motion that we direct the city staff to have the dog euthanized.
I have a motion by
Second.
Johnson, second by O'Day. Chairman Johnson.
You know, thank you, Mr. President. I take no pleasure in this, and I want to point out, all dogs are good dogs, and we only have dangerous owners, and that's the problem. And it's a really sad situation when a dog has to go down because its owner couldn't properly train it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? The most motion is, I presume if we get a hold of the dog, to euthanize the dog. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Chairman O'Day.
I'll just say, last time this came up, we did motion to remove the dog from the city. It was taking a chance. What happened was the dog ended up back in the city. We learned from that. Another incident happened with that dog, so I, we ended up euthanizing the dog anyway. And I think, rather than risk having that happen again, that's why I would rather go this route.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We will move on to item eight, which is our council committee reports. Item 8A is Safety and Public Works Committee. Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had three items on our agenda tonight, first of which, which was an addition of a rectangular rapid-fire beacon at North Third Street and Holly Street, the main intersection going from the hospital parking lot to the front door of the hospital. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend installing the RFB crossing at North Third and Third Street and at Holly Street slash Essential Health, not to exceed $15,000, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item was a grant application discussion on a few different candidates for grants that we were thinking about applying for. First of which was a surface transportation block grant program for Highway 210, the rebuild that we have coming up in 2026, '27. This grant is up to 1.9 million, 20% match. We have about $4 million in local costs. This would bring, this would bring our costs somewhere down around the $450,000, $475,000 range. The next one is Highway Safety Improvement Roundabout Grant. This would be for the intersection of Willow and South Sixth. There's been a lot of talk over the years about putting up a stoplight. They still think that's not a good idea, but they think it is a good idea to put in a $2 million roundabout now, three years after we rebuilt the road. So we're applying for this grant. It's a 50/50 split between local share and MINDOT, first of all, which brings it down to a million. This would cover 90% of the rest, bringing our share down to 100,000 for that 2 million. Next one was a Transportation Alternatives Program. This has to do with our trail coming in, the Cayuna Trail, coming into town after it crosses 210, going along 10th Street. I believe this one was around $275,000. I don't have it in front of me right now. But motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of applying for all three grants as presented, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Beazer, or by Erickson?
Sorry.
By Beazer, okay. Mr. Erickson.
Discussion. I will need to abstain because of my employment, my employer's involved with MINDOT in the solicitation process of at least two of these, two of the three grants.
Thank you, Dan. Any, Chairman Johnson.
Mr. President, I just have one question. Do we, did we get a reason or an explanation on why a roundabout was absolutely unfeasible three years ago and is now like a really good idea to spend $2 million on a roundabout there? I was on the council then, and I thought it was a lack of space. Like, are they making compact roundabouts nowadays and they didn't have those three? Do we know what the reasoning is? Thank you.
I don't know. Chairman O'Day, do we have it?
I believe we did, I believe we did talk about this a little bit in our agenda meeting. We didn't talk about it tonight, but Jesse, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is more of a compact roundabout, but they would be taking up some of the space of private property as far as the gas station and possibly the, is it a Heineken Insurance Building? Am I right?
City Engineer, Public Works Director Dean, is anything you can add?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Ideally, we'd try and stay within the bounds of the right-of-way currently, as long as you could fit it, as well as make it big enough that would accommodate every type of vehicle that would need to go through there, like semi-truck traffic. So the goal would be to stay within the right-of-way as long as we could size it appropriately. And there are a handful of different ways to do that if that's a flat median or, there's a lot of different ways to design it appropriately.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson, I know that didn't answer all your questions.
Thank you.
But I'm sorry. Tiffany Stengline, you had your hand up? No? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll just speak on the same basis, against that particular project. It's become a running joke that that intersection was something that the council asked for improvements when this project was done. We were told, no, we shouldn't do that. We should, you know, we even asked for a conduit, electrical wire to go under that street so we could put in stoplights there at some point, because we ourselves knew that that would be the case, that we would need that. We were told, no, you're never gonna need that. Now, here we are, and we're looking at taking up more land and more, more property in order to fix a problem that we should have fixed in the first place. Very irritating to me. And even if it is 50% match, and then there's a grant and all that stuff, we're still spending $100,000 of the taxpayers' money to fix something that should have been fixed in the first place, and the whole time we're just told that, no, 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 don't worry about that, don't worry about that, don't worry about that. So I speak against this. The intersection is a problem, but the intersection should remain a problem because I think it's just ridiculous that MINDOT continues to do stuff like that. End of rant.
Thank you, Mr. Rant. Any further discussion? I must speak in favor of it, just to contradict what the mayor said. Just to, just to temper the conversation a little bit. I understand that this is something that we thought and pleaded with MINDOT on their road to put in at the time they redid the law, the road. However, three years later, now it's their idea, so it's now a good idea. But it was a good idea then. It may or may not have cost us less money back then. I don't know. If we, if we get this grant, $100,000 seems like a fair project cost if we get the grant. So I certainly will vote in favor of it and encourage you all to do the same. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All three together, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Anything else, Chairman O'Day?
Yeah, we had one more item.
Okay.
One more item was just active code enforcement cases. We had two properties on this one. Let's see. 426 B Street and 624 Eighth Avenue Northeast. Sean, if you want to put the pictures up there. These are two different properties that have gone through three citations in our new process. $600 in open citations have not responded to staff. Staff's recommending for both to issue a 10-day order to correct letter and begin working with the attorney for abatement on these properties, as well as charge for that abatement. And motion coming out of committee was to follow those recommendations, and ISO move.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. I don't know if that was, that was kind of half for and half against.
It was totally 100% aye in the opposition.
In opposition, okay, thank you. That motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. We will move on now to Personal and Finance Committee Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have 11 quick items on our agenda tonight. The first of which is to authorize or consider advertisement for bids for the Memorial Park softball lights. And we had some good discussion on it, and we decided to not go up for bids right now, but just have that project follow the regular budgetary process. The next item is to ratify the hiring of park maintenance position, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Samuel Jensen effective November 14th, 2022, and further that he be placed on step one of the park maintenance wage grid at $20.48 per hour. An ISO move.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second? Second by Stengline? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is another, ratifying another hiring, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Kari LaRose effective October 31st, 2022. Further, that she be placed on step three of the administrative specialist wage grid, $23.45 per hour. An ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by the chief. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thanks, Mr. President. Next up is another ratifying, and we'll ratify the hiring of Community Service Officer Jason Baller with a starting wage of $16 an hour effective November 3rd, 2022. An ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thanks. Next up is the opposite. We are going to accept with regret the resignation of lineman Jonathan Engholm effective November 4th, 2022. An ISO move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this one, we are not backfilling immediately. The Public Utility Commission kind of just wants to take a look at their overall organization and see if they want to backfill a line worker, or if maybe there's something better for that department.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. The motion, the next item is the Assistant Planner Job Description that we haven't been able to fill yet. The motion is to approve the revised Assistant Planner Job Description as presented and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stangline. Chairman Johnson.
So, it previously wanted a bachelor's degree and four years' experience or two years' experience, something. We eliminated the bachelor's degree and you can make up for it with work experience in this type of line of work. So, we're hoping that should open it up and we can get some applicants who have the work experience and are entirely qualified, but just lack a bachelor's degree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is an MOA agreements with unions for the 2023 health insurance plans. And the motion is to accept all of the MOAs as attached and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
The unions already agreed to them all. These are the budgeted numbers we expected for health insurance next year and everything's good and moving forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, this is just a motion, correct? Yep, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is transferring funds from sinking funds and the motion is to adopt the attached resolution relating to finance transferring certain funds from sinking funds, closing out funds 301 and 313 with the cash balances being transferred to Fund 101. And any future delinquent tax revenues or special assessment collections going to Fund 400 and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stangline. Chairman Johnson.
So, Mr. President, this is about almost $84,000 excess money on these two loans that we had paid off in February and we have that money sitting there. Our policy would normally put that in Fund 400 for capital purchases, but because we have that settlement to handle this year, we're going to transfer the $84,000 to the general fund and help offset some of that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same. Oh, this is a resolution.
This is a resolution.
Okay, my apologies. This is a resolution. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is some deferred assessment applications and the motion is to approve the applications for deferment of assessments payable 2023 for the applicants at PIDs 41191220, 41300682, 41191721, and 41250875 and I so move.
Second. We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
All right, Mr. President. Next up is to adopt budget for Slurflur, part of ARPA. So, we have some recommendations from staff coming out of the budget workshop we had and one of the recommendations here tonight is to not spend it all. We're still going to leave behind some money, but we did identify some projects that the majority of the council wants to do. So, we're going to do this in one motion, but the motion is to identify funding for the parks prioritizing JC's Park number one at $200,000, Lump Park Beach number two at $150,000, Kiwanis Park three at $75,000, Lump Park Campground four at $150,000 for a total of seven, $575,000. Further, to allocate $300,000 to the 2023 capital and further to authorize, appropriate $140,000 for the Police Department HVAC while still going with option two, which was the dual HVAC system, the rest of the money coming out of 2024 capital and then leaving $373,097.57 to be appropriated in the future and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stangline. Any discussion? Hang on. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want some clarification on the park funds for the park board, because I know they're going to ask, they're going to want to know what the, what the council is requesting with that. I know you had listed kind of the numbering that you had them there. Is that what you are expecting them to go with? Are we transferring money in, in hopes that they're going to do that? I just wanted to know what their role and that's going to be.
So, we, oh, sorry, Mr.
Yes, please. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My thought was to help the park board better understand what, what we were thinking as a council, we would prioritize, they gave us a list of things we could fund and we said, great, JC's Park looks number one. Let's get those softball fields fixed up. Let's get that hockey rink built. Next up, we like that Lump Park Beach. You know, we're trying to spend this money to get kids outside being active and healthy. So, we're trying to just give them, the city council's perspective of our priorities of what we want the ARPA money spent on. And in this motion, priority one is JC's Park, two is the Lump Park Beach, three is the cleaning up at Kiwanis, four is the Lump Park Campground. That's what we are authorizing money to be spent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Mayor.
Just to follow up, Jesse, is that clear?
To follow up on the mayor's, just to be clear, if the park board can't meet these criteria of dollars and cents, what happens?
Yeah, it comes back to us.
Yep.
They need more. But I think what, it's less dollars and cents, more priorities of the parks. You want to get, fix the softball fields and build a hockey rink, let's do that. If it comes back in at 200, maybe communicate with us. We work together, we work well together. We haven't said no to them in years, so.
Right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. And then next up on is our, we, we considered setting a budget workshop and we went even further. We set, or we made a motion to set workshop for the budget Monday, November 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers and I so move.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion on the council workshop? Mr. Chair.
This will just be the kind of the final, what the budget's going to look like that we bring to the public on December 12th. Any changes we've made in the last few months will be shown to us and we'll be ready to answer any questions at the December 12th meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. That motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item nine unfinished business. Item nine A is adopting a resolution, adopting contested assessments for 2022 nuisance abatement. So, this would be, uh, our Community Development Director, Mr. Krambek, anything that you can add that will clarify what we're doing on this one, because we have two that are real similar.
We do, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So, this item is regarding the eight contested nuisance abatement properties from the October 17th City Council meeting. City Council adjourned the public hearing to this meeting. So, as a reminder, these are for citations and abatements from 9/1 of '21 to 8/31 of '22. And this is only for the property owners who spoke at the last meeting or recommendations from staff or council. So, staff did prepare a memo with the history of each property and will briefly go over each. Staff is recommending waiving nuisance assessments for four properties. So, first property, Kerry Hilton at 516 First Avenue Northeast. This property owner did not speak at the October 17th meeting. This was a staff recommendation as a property owner has shown a willingness to work with the city, has improved the property throughout the summertime. Citations were a result, I believe, of miscommunication on the completion day. So, staff is recommending waiving the nuisance assessments and giving the property owner until springtime to resolve the remaining issues, assessing the amount of $800. Next property is Gregory Gaken at 923 Ninth Avenue Northeast. This was a staff recommendation as well before the public hearing. However, the homeowner did also speak at the council, asking to waive the nuisance assessment. Staff does recommend waiving the nuisance assessment as a property owner worked with the city to resolve the issue. This is the amount of 125. The, all the issues with this property has been resolved in a timely manner. Next property is Brian Timmers, 1209 Oak Street. Councilmember Erickson recommended waiving this at the last council meeting in the amount of $125. Mr. Timmers did resolve the issue with junk and debris at the property and staff does also recommend waiving the citations for this property. The fourth one is Craig Madich at 823 Brook Street. Jason worked with his property owner regarding the junk and debris issue. It has since been resolved and citations were voided for the junk and debris. He did keep in contact with city staff through this process. The remaining assessment amount is for illegally parking on, on the unapproved surface. The property owner did have an issue with a tenant regarding the illegal parking issues on the property. There's also, I believe, some confusion as our code compliance intern is working on the illegal parking while Jason was working on the junk and debris. So, with that, the property owner continues to work on, on removing the vehicles. There's only two remaining and said that they should be cleaned up within the next couple of weeks. So, staff is recommending waiving the nuisance assessments and reviewing the property in the spring. It's the amount of 675. The four other properties, they are included in the resolution not to void. Mike Thielen at 218 Second Avenue Northeast. The nuisance assessment is for property maintenance issue on the rental property. The property owner did not work with staff on the issue. The citation was sent in late October. No further citations were sent. Staff does not send citations for property maintenance in November. We did re-inspect the property in the springtime. It was completed. This one is the amount of 125. Next property is Matthew Jaeger, 9206 North Town Street. Warning letter as well as citations were sent for an unlicensed vehicle. There is no contact from the property owner until the city did finally send a 10-day order to correct letter with possible abatement of the vehicle. The property is now in compliance. Just wanted to make council aware of that. Next property is Roy Parker, 1720 Laurel Street. This property has gone, has had issues since 2009 with a roof issue. There's been three permits issued to this property. This one's in River Turels to stop the citation issues. The minute a roof permit's issued, we stopped the citation process. However, we did issue another one this fall and Mr. Parker has now started on the roof. So, did want to make council aware of that. The roof is not yet complete. This is the amount of $2,425. And the last property is of Wallace Goodrich, does not have a address, is, is a vacant property next to Garfield School or Lowell. Mr. Goodrich bought a vacant property to store trailers and vehicles. He received multiple citation letters and not reached out to current staff. I believe he's maybe working with former staff on the property, but, but the property has since been abated as per the request of SPW. The property owner did have a conversation with me on the phone and indicated the site would no longer be an issue. I did follow up on the property and since the nuisance was abated, there has been no other issues with the property. The property is clear. This is in the amount of 1,425. So, any properties that the city council would like to also waive or add back could be done through an amended resolution as the current resolution only includes the removal of the four staff recommended properties. So, staff would recommend opening the public hearing to hear testimony for or against proposed assessments as listed and also to adopt the attached resolution, adopting the contested assessments as proposed for the 2022 nuisance abatement assessments.
You guys got all that? Any questions of Mr. Krambek before we continue with the public hearing that was held over from October 17th? Mr. Johnson?
One question, Mr. President. When, when the, when you said only the staff recommendation to waives are currently in the resolution to be waived, does that mean the property recommended by Councilmember Erickson to be waived is not included in the resolution?
That is in there as well as staff did recommend waiving that one as well.
Okay, that one is in the resolution as it sits right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions? And we will continue the public hearing at 8:14 from October 17th and ask if anybody would like to speak on any of these proposed assessments. I'll ask a third and final time, anybody who wishes to speak on these proposed assessments. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing that's been held over from October 17th and ask if anybody would like to make a motion on this item to adopt a resolution, adopting these contested assessments from 2022 nuisance abatement.
So move, Erickson.
We have a motion by Erickson, second by O'Day. Any discussion? So, this is adopting the ones that will still be assessed. Mr. Erickson? Nope, you're okay? Hearing no discussion. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beazer.
Yes.
Stangline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We will move on now to item nine B, which is a resolution, consider a resolution, adopting additional assessments for the 2022 nuisance abatement. Community Development Director Krambek, fill us in on what these are.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, these are property owners that City Council has not heard from yet. This item is for additional 2022 nuisance abatement assessments that were missed during the first round of assessment certifications because of a data extraction issue. With this, with the addresses here, staff has recommended waiving the nuisance assessments for 1324 Mill Avenue as the homeowner continues to work with staff to resolve the issues. Staff also recommends, this one's not in the, in the motion in the agenda, this owner did come in this afternoon to speak with us. Staff is also recommending waiving citations for 410 Ethel Street as the violations were the result of a previous owner of the property. There's now a new owner, which would be assessed of violations, no longer an issue on the property. So, staff would recommend opening the public hearing to hear testimony for or against the proposed assessments as listed and also adopt the attached resolution, adopting the assessments as proposed for the 2022 nuisance assessments with the exception of PID 41190529 and PID And if there are any contested properties that council would like to hear at the next meeting, it would have to be adjourned and we do have a sheet to fill out there from contested property owners.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for Mr. Krambek or any staff members as to what these proposed assessments are? Hearing none, it is 8:17 and we will open the public hearing on these assessments. And ask if anybody's in the audience or online and wishes to speak on these, now is your your time. If you are online, and I know we don't have anybody online, but the procedure is star three allows you to be recognized and star six will unmute your microphone. And for a third call, I will ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on these proposed assessments. Hearing none. It is 8:18 and we will close the public hearing on the additional assessments and ask if there is a recommendation from the council on this proposed resolution.
Is this where we would adopt it?
This is where we would make a motion to adopt the resolution either as proposed by staff, which is all listed less the two, or something else.
I'd move to adopt as proposed by staff, Johnson.
Second, Erickson.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Erickson to adopt the proposed assessments less the two that we're holding out or we're waiving. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Beazer?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Krambeck. Next up is item 9C. This is a public hearing, proposed resolution for petition to vacate the alley submitted by My Neighbor to Love in Alley Blocks M and E West. And Mr. Dean, you're going to bring us any new information on this?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So the city received the request from My Neighbor to Love LLC to vacate the platted alley right of way as shown in the maps included in your packet. There's currently no utility infrastructure and no proposed public improvements in that right of way as proposed. Staff is recommending opening a public hearing to hear testimony regarding the proposed vacation. And then following the public hearing, staff is recommending adoption of the attached resolution which vacates the alley while reserving rights to an easement for utility purposes as needed.
Thank you, City Engineer Public Works Director Dean. Any questions of staff as to what the request is? Hearing none. It is 8:20 and we will open the public hearing on the request for alley vacation. When you come forth, please state your name and address. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on the alley vacation? I will ask a second time. Please come forth. Good to see you again, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Sure, Vicki Kenny, 8660 Fernmont Road in Lake Shaw, Minnesota. So hopefully third time's a charm. As you know, we'd like to develop this property and we've had some challenges with this property. We're not able to build on Second Street because it's not a viable street. And so having the alley cut through the property makes half of our property, you know, unbuildable. So we would like to replat it going east to west so that we can use the full, full use of our property. So that's kind of the gist of it. And the alley cut, cutting down the middle of it is really useless to us and to the other property owner on both sides. It goes nowhere. It ends up on Jackson Street, which will never be a street with the retention pond in the middle. So we're just asking that the city then votes to vacate this alley so we can develop our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on the alley vacation petition? Anybody else? Third time's the charm, last call. We will close the public hearing at 8:21 and ask the council if anybody has a recommendation on this request. Tiffany Stingline?
I will move that we adopt the attached resolution vacating the alley as indicated while reserving the rights to an easement for utility purposes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Erickson.
Second by Erickson. Any discussion on the motion? Chairman Johnson, then Chairman O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this has come before us before and I've spent a lot of time looking through our comprehensive plan, through our future land use maps, reading our brand-new, hot-off-the-press zoning code, and I just can't find a justification to vacate this alley. This part of town was just rezoned. This isn't like an old historic zoning map, right? We just urgently had to get it adopted this summer, right? It was a sense of urgency, get this perfect map adopted. This is zoned traditional neighborhood two. For those who don't know, traditional neighborhood twos are like your traditional neighborhoods of mixed use, walkability. The only two other neighborhoods in town that are traditional neighborhood two are Kingwood Street and Oak Street. So when we adopted this urgently needed plan, we were viewing the development pattern to take place down here in consistency with our comprehensive plan to be traditional neighborhood two. Small lots, mixed-use building, walkability, sidewalks, and utilities in the alley and garbage pickup in the alley. We've been working on this for years. This isn't anything new. So I'm going to vote no on vacating the alley because this is a traditional neighborhood two district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike O'Day?
I just have a question. I don't know if it's for planning and zoning. I don't know if it's for community development, but what is, what is the fate of, of Second Street Northwest? If you look at it right now, I don't know if there's a picture of it somewhere online probably, but if anybody's driven by it, is this the way we're leaving Second Street forever? And if we're going to, if we're going to make a new development right next to Second Street and ignore it, because the, the conversation has always been completely avoiding the fact that we're just going to leave this looking the way it is forever and that's fine with everyone. If you look at it right now, it doesn't make sense that that would never be turned into a normal street. And it doesn't make sense that Jackson would never, ever be developed either. So moving into this, it's, it's basically giving in to that idea. But in my mind, I just don't, did planning, planning and zoning speak about this during the rezoning process? Was that always part of the plan when we, when we finalized this? Because I miss that part. And if we do this, I think there's, there's ways of doing this where you do have things facing both sides of the street. But I just don't, I don't understand why we're, we're ignoring that fact.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Krambeck maybe can shed some light. If not, I know I can.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this did come up in some conversations. I'm not sure at the planning and zoning level, but some of the staff level conversations with the former city engineer. He didn't have any indications that Second Street, Northwest Second Street was, was planned for development, possibly the city engineer. Jesse could, could elaborate on that as well. I know one of the issues is all of Tyrell there. Essentially, it's their backyards that abut it. So no development could really happen on the east side of the property, but it would cut off kind of smaller lots on the west side of the property like Councilmember O'Day was speaking of.
Does that answer your question?
In a roundabout way.
Okay. Roundabout, roundabouts. Okay, any further discussion? Tiffany Stingline?
Well, I, this property has been like this, sitting there for probably forever, but certainly it's been this road into nothing for as long as I can remember. And we've had this, it hasn't been built up or developed. It hasn't been terribly appealing. And so while I do love our traditional neighborhood, neighborhoods, I think that this is a viable use for this land that we haven't had before and it will actually be used.
Anything else? Mr. Beazer?
I'm wondering if you, if we can make a jump to page 207. This is with respect to what actually is a traditional neighborhood two. Staff did a nice job of providing excerpts of both the zoning ordinance and definitions within. So when we talk about T2 or TN type two districts, let's see here, you know, facilities such as this are actually, do actually fall within the zoning ordinance. So I guess, I guess, you know, when we, when we talk about this type of neighborhood and what it should be, this does fall within guidelines as stated in the zoning ordinance. You know, so it's not really a question of one thing or the other. It's spelled out pretty clearly.
Thank you. Mr. Stunek, anything?
I agree with Gabe. I will be voting no also.
Okay, Mr. Erickson?
I'm going to support it for the reasons that Mr. Beazer mentioned. In addition to that, you know, the property owner owns all the parcels around this. They're asking for a vacation. Later on, later in our agenda, the developer is looking to do something as Councilwoman Stingline mentioned. And so I don't want to be, I don't want to stand in the way of that development. And so I'm going to, I plan to support.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor?
I will just speak on consistency basis. I'm a fan of alleys. I push for alleys. I have continually spoke on the need for us to develop with alleys and so I'm going to continue to be consistent with that in this as well. We should be supporting alleys. We should use alleys. We have a need for them in terms of our utilities and in terms of our garbage pickups. We deal with that in North Brainerd all the time. I'm going to continue to be consistent with that. It has nothing to do with the project. It is simply to do with the consistency in what I would like to see our city developed as.
Tim, you look like you've got something to say.
I don't know.
It is kind of fun, isn't it? All right, everybody's had a chance to speak. We have a motion in favor, a second. Everybody's had a chance to speak. This is a resolution. Unless I hear a burning desire, we are going to move forward and Administrator Burgman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
No.
Beazer?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
No.
Stunek?
No.
Bevins?
Yes. That resolution is adopted. We will move on to item 9D, which is a public hearing and discussion of the, right, 2022 snow removal? Could this be possible? Snow in November?
Can't we table this till it snows?
We could.
Friday.
This weekend.
Okay. So we are going to ask if our city engineer, Public Works Director Dean, has anything you'd like to add on this before we open a public hearing? And this is a discussion on the upcoming snow year, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So included in the packets is just a slightly revised version of the presentation that we did present to the Safety and Public Works Committee at the October 17th meeting. So right now, our staff is recommending opening a public hearing to hear testimony on the downtown special services district for this upcoming winter season as well as any future years. The council's been provided printouts in the paper clipped packet there. Those are correspondence that staff has received with comments regarding the district following the public hearing. Staff would ask the council to provide a motion either to award the snow removal bid from Thomas Backhoe Services for the 2022-2023 winter season or to eliminate the special services district.
Any questions of Jesse regarding what this public hearing is about? I have one and I don't see it in here. I don't see a recommendation from staff as to what you or staff is recommending, but I believe there is one.
My recommendation would be to keep the special services district as is.
Thank you. Any reason that could become part of the record?
Yes, sir. The consistency downtown is, is something that's kind of a challenge for a lot of different business owners. From our perspective, this is something that our city staff, our street department would be highly taxed to try and deliver this higher service. Now we can provide a similar level of service elsewhere in other commercial districts as well. Downtown's a little bit more sensitive to that walkability piece. So we would recommend that we would have this service to keep that consistency for the accessibility of those businesses.
Thank you. Any questions again of staff? Hearing none. It is 8:32. Even if you wrote a letter, you can still come forward and give us your thoughts on the 2022-2023 special services, downtown special services district. It's 8:32. Please come forward in an orderly manner. State your names, state your mailing address or where you live, even better, and tell us what you think of this special services proposal. Second time call, come on up.
Hi, Marie Kirsch, 323 North 10th Street. I own Naughty Pine Bakery in downtown Brainerd at 707 Laurel and I just would like to speak in support of keeping the special services district. I've been in business since 2019, so I've had a couple winters now to see how those services carry out and I just think it's invaluable to my business and to maintaining downtown Brainerd as a destination shopping district for the area. I rent my property, but I do pay about 25% of the total assessment for the building to my landlord. So I pay about $500 a year for those services that include the sidewalk snow removal, the priority removal of snow on the streets, as well as the, the garbage removal and the, the kind of landscaping that goes into that as well. I just don't think me as an individual business owner or even my landlord would be able to find as cost-effective of a solution to removing the snow and keeping it cleared. And not to mention that by having the special services district, it just allows the consistency of service across the whole district so that we're making it an easy choice for locals to shop in downtown rather than going to the big box stores where they are paying for contractors to come and clear out snow timelies. So yeah, I just want to speak in, in support of it. I would encourage the city to continue to look into whether there's more, there's more cost-effective solutions. I know an issue has been that there's been only one contractor bidding on it, so it's kind of not really a competitive bid process anymore. So I'm not really sure if it is a fair bid that's getting put out there. It's the only one that looks like we've been receiving. So if the city is able to investigate whether possibly like purchasing equipment and hiring staff to do the service as part of a city service would be more cost-effective and kind of bring the cost of that assessment down, I think would be worth exploring. But as we know, snowfall is pretty imminent for this year, so I don't think that that's going to be a solution for this coming winter. So I think it makes sense to go ahead with a contractor for this coming year, but again, I would encourage the city to continue to look to see if there are more cost-effective options. I did go around as part of Destination Down on Brainerd Coalition, went around with some board members and spoke to about 24 different businesses and the overall support seemed to be for keeping the assessment. I did send some recommendations to Jesse just to possibly improve the services. One of my suggestions is just maybe having like a notification system to let business owners know when that service is going into place or we're not going out and shoveling and then having the street sweeper come down the sidewalk an hour later. I think it would be more about those service if we were just more aware of when they were going to be doing the sidewalk removal. And I had a few other suggestions in there that is in the, the letter I sent to Jesse, so feel free to take that into consideration, but thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else wish to testify on the 2022-2023 downtown special services assessment?
Hi, Teresa Woodward, 909 Fifth Avenue Northeast. I have Cattails Books and Gifts right down the street and I'm here on behalf of myself and my landlord, Randy Morris with Morris Property and the owner of the Elks Building there. And we're in favor of keeping the special district. We can't timely remove the snow and complete the process the way that the contract can. We are also responsible for the, the back parking lot that we have and the cost of that is more than the cost of the assessment. So thank you. Usually you don't get a better deal when you're doing something in the city, but it's, this is, this is fantastic and we, we can't see it go. This needs to stay.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify before the council?
Hi, Brenda Billman, 719 Laurel Street. I own Purple Fern Bath Company in downtown Brainerd and I'm in support of keeping the special services district. It is invaluable. And I know Marie said that there could be more cost-effective measures in the future and I would urge the city to explore that option.
Thank you.
Kelly, I'll try to keep it short so you don't cut me off.
Name and address, name and address.
Good evening.
Name and address.
Just let me finish. My name is Ed Meng. I happen to own a business in downtown Brainerd. I was a former owner of the building downtown Brainerd. I am a resident of the city of Brainerd.
What address? What address? What address?
I'm not going to give the home address.
Well, give your.
623 Laurel.
Okay.
Okay. I've been here for 48 and a half years. I can talk you about the good, the bad, and the ugly as far as snow removal. In the past about 20-some years, we've had pretty good snow removal. Tom Thompson has the equipment, has the staff and knowledge to be able to do this project quickly and get it back into business real quickly. We have a real big competitive situation in business within our community, not only with the locals within the downtown area, but with big boxes and malls farther to the west. If we do not keep up the ability to attract consumers, our businesses will suffer. Now I am one that can survive three days without snow removal, but I'm fortunate. I've had 40-some years of business to be able to build up that reputation and the money to do it. Some of these businesses can't be put out of business for that long. And, you know, we're talking about the future of the downtown Brainerd. The future of downtown Brainerd is held because we do a good job, not only as businesses, but as a city to make the downtown look presentable. A, the flowers during the summer, the snow removal during the winter. With that, we have competitive abilities to do our own businesses. So I am in favor of keeping the snow removal as is. Now, there's one change we can make that will make a lot of people, my building owner and other corner building owners, a little bit happier. Let's go to a square footage type assessment, whether it is a hybrid system or not, going by the frontage foot, it is unfair to the corner businesses because they're not only paying for maybe 50-foot frontage on the street, but they're paying for 50 plus 140 feet, so it's 190 feet. 140 feet, so it's 190 feet. Whereas a business in the middle of the block gets the same benefits, but only pays for 25, maybe 50 feet. So that's the one change I can see making on the way of dividing up the costs, because I think the costs are reasonable, but let's try to be a little bit more fair. I've been able to pay it for all these years. I've been happily been able to pay it for all these years, because it allowed me to stay in business. And I'm hoping in the future, if I find a buyer to buy my business in the future, because I'm getting to that age where at some point in time, I'll have to sell it or move on, I'm hoping that they can continue on. So please, keep the snow removal happening, keep the flowers happening. And by the way, this summer, we've had really, really, really good success with flowers. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on the downtown special services district? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
Ed Shaw, 521 North 9th Street, Brainerd. My wife and I own Sage on Laurel. Well, she owns it. I'm on paper as a second owner, but it's her business. We also own the Coop Building, where Marie's Bakery, among other businesses, is located, another corner building like my predecessor Ed has. And we like the assessment district. The flowers, the beautification, that's a good idea. It's good for the whole area, brings more business downtown. Sidewalk snow removal, very important. If we didn't do that, some people wouldn't shovel, and there'd be little glaciers people have to climb over all winter. So it's a those are good things. The issue is how the cost is handled for street snow removal. Every other property owner in the city, business or residential, pays taxes, and those taxes include the removal of snow in the street in front of our place. Except for the downtown businesses, they pay taxes to cover snow removal for the whole city. Then they pay an additional fee for a portion of their snow removal on their street. That's that would be our concern, the concern of my wife and I, that it essentially is an extra tax on downtown business owners, not for an extra service like sidewalk snow removal or flowers beautification. Those are extra, and we should pay for those. But street snow removal, and everyone else gets included in their taxes, we don't. So I would ask that, as we're going forward with this, that street snow removal for downtown be handled the same way as every other place in town, business or residential, where it's included in taxes. Sidewalk and beautification items, we're happy to I'm happy to continue paying for those. Those are extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Anybody else who wish to testify for or against, or just make comments to the council on the downtown special services district? Second call? Final call. We will close the public hearing at 8:43 and ask if anybody in the council would like to, let's see, I don't know. Are we making a? Yes, we have alternative one, two as choices. We could come up with something different if you'd like to, but we're looking for a motion tonight to adopt. Is this a resolution? I don't. Yes. No. We're going to look. Okay.
Yeah, that could kind of just solve it there.
Okay. Do we have that tabled motion? Okay, we're going to take just a two-minute break so we can catch up.
Mr. President, if I can help clarify a little bit here.
Yeah.
So what staff is asking for is clarification if the council wants to make a recommendation on keeping the special services district as is for the 2022-2023 season, or eliminating the district for this upcoming winter. If they wish to keep the special services district, our recommendation would be to accept the bid for Tom's Backhoe Service, which is included in the packet as well for the upcoming winter season, as presented at the, I believe it was the October 3rd meeting, awarding that bid, if alternative one of keeping the district is the recommendation.
Thank you. The confusion, Jesse, is Mr. O'Day has brought up that he believes there's already a motion on the table that's been tabled on this item. And we're I don't recall that. I recall tabling the item, but not a motion, and so I'm a little confused. So we're just double-checking the minutes.
Yeah, I can clarify. And I don't remember exactly which meeting it was from, but it was the contract for Tom's Backhoe that was coming through SPW.
Right, and that, at this point, we don't have a contract on this. This is for do we? Oh, yes, we do. We have a bid.
We do.
Yep.
And we don't have, I was just suggesting that we revisit that tabled motion, unless somebody else wants to bring up another motion.
We're looking for the tabled motion right now. We can't take another tabled, another motion if we have one that's.
Okay.
Connie Hillman?
I have it in the minutes from October 3rd, that it was moved and seconded by council members O'Day and Erickson to approve the bid from Tom's Backhoe Service for the 2022-2023 downtown snow removal services in the downtown district. And then it was moved and seconded by Johnson O'Day duly carried to table the motion until November 7th.
There we go.
Here we are.
Thank you, Connie.
So we have a motion on the table. We have a second to accept the bid from Tom's Backhoe on the 2022. Thank you, Mr. O'Day. To accept it. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? The motion is by O'Day and Erickson to accept the bid from Tom's Backhoe for '22 and '23. Chairman Johnson?
Mr. Brown, as I was part of the problem to delay this, but I'm glad we did. I liked the feedback we got today. I really like what we heard from Mr. Mink and Mr. Shaw. I think square footage is more industry standard in commercial real estate for a cam maintenance thing, so we might want to look into how we're billing that in the future. But as this motion stands, heading into this snow season right now, I support this motion to enter into a contract with Tom.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chairman O'Day?
I think changing up any contract at this point would be pretty late in the game, because we have snow in the forecast right now this week. It's only a few inches.
Thank you.
It's up to Kevin.
But I think going forward, because of what we've heard from staff recommendations, because of what we've heard from testimony, and I do agree with Mr. Johnson that square footage is square footage is something that maybe we should look into, among other things. We've had emails and different letters, at least I have, suggesting some other things, but at this point, with that contract, a lot of those things would be invalid for this winter. But next summer, I think we can talk about streamlining something else.
Thank you. Todd Erickson, you had your hand up?
Nothing to add, other than what these two gentlemen just mentioned.
Chief Stunek?
I would just like to support what Ed said. I think corner lots should be looking at at square footage. I think that would help the owners out and the commercial people very well. So I think we need to take a look at that as we move forward.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. So the motion is to accept Tom's Backhoe bid. I do not believe that's a resolution. All right? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We will move on to item E, which is the call for applicants. Mayor Bedeau?
It is the call for applicants. Before I get started, I just want to apologize quickly. I had a member of the public reach out who had filled out an application and was not recommended by myself, and they said that the process could be a little bit more clear to them. And so I just want to apologize for this process. How this works is you put in your application, either myself or President Bevins will make a recommendation with the council. The council selects whether or not to add that person to a commission. We could do a little bit better job of explaining why or why not that may be the case. So I just want to apologize upfront if there's any confusion on that. The following applications are available at ci.Brainard.mn.us/boards. Charter Commission, one term expiring 2028, one term expiring 2025. Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. Library, one term expiring 2023. We also have two terms for the EDA, one expiring 2027 and one expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up is item 10, the new business. Item 10A is adopting a proposed resolution declaring costs to be assessed, ordering preparation of proposed assessments, and ordering a public hearing on the proposed 2021-2022, last year's assessment of downtown special services district and downtown snow removal. This is, Mr. Dean, anything you wish to add to last year's assessments?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. So just to clarify, so this is being brought forward again to the council as we're just making some corrections to the snow removal assessment amounts. The proposed assessment for the private properties is going to be reduced by roughly about 16.8% from what was done previously. So we're recommending the adoption of the resolution, declaring the cost assessed for the corrected amounts, and setting a public hearing at the November 21st council meeting.
Got it. So all you're looking for today is to set the public hearing on the new and improved assessment amount?
Yes, sir, and declare the cost assessed.
Okay. Any questions from staff? Okay. So now, we're looking for a motion to approve? I'm sorry. A resolution which declares the cost to be assessed, orders the preparation of the proposed assessment, and sets the public hearing for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
So move, Erickson.
Motion by Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none? Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yep.
Beazer?
Yes.
Stingline?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
And Bevins?
Yes, that resolution is adopted. We will move on now to item 10B, consideration of a preliminary plat for the Creekside Community Development. This, again, would go to James Kramvik, our community development director. Anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll just briefly explain the preliminary plat here. So the purpose of this preliminary plat request is to consolidate 11 lots into four larger lots. All lots do meet the size requirement of the TN2 district. The applicant with this plat has proposed the construction of two 12plex units, as well as a boarding house above a health center if this plat, preliminary plat is and final plat is approved. Like I mentioned there, this is only the preliminary plat. The final plat improvement would have to be applied for at a later date, and the final plat is really any recommendations from the planning commission approved by city council that needs to be done from the preliminary plat to the final plat. So with that, the planning commission considered the preliminary plat during its regular meeting on October 19th, and upon review, voted unanimously to recommend approval as presented, with conditions, and the conditions that they recommended, I've put into the recommended motion. Motion to approve the requested preliminary plat with the following conditions. The developer agrees, developer's agreement for stormwater retention and installation of required fire hydrants are recorded with the final plat, and the applicant work with staff to create the appropriate naming of the plat, and the rear yard setback minimum indicated on the plat be 10 feet. I certainly answer any other questions of city council.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Seeing none? Is there a motion from our liaison?
I would move that, Mr. President, to approve the requested preliminary plat with the following conditions as stated. Developer's agreement for stormwater retention and installation of required fire hydrants are recorded with the final plat, and that the applicant work with staff to create the appropriate naming of the plat, and rear yard setbacks minimum indicated on the plat be 10 feet.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Stingline. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. O'Day.
Was this all contingent on the alley vacation?
I would presume it would have been.
Well, then, congratulations. I do want to thank you for bringing a more complete plan than what we've seen in the past. I still have some questions for you on that. I think that's coming up later in the discussion here, but that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Any further, Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, I'll be voting no. I mean, I know technically you can shoehorn this into TN2 and say that it makes sense and say, oh, the lot sizes are consistent. Well, there is no maximum lot size in TN2, so that's not even really a consideration, right? You know, the density isn't there, the usage of the alleyway isn't there. It's I don't like this lot split. I'm not going to support it. I know they said, Commissioner comments in the Planning and Zoning Board, that, hey, look, it fits policy two and five where we want more housing, but that's like all it fits. We have a future land use map, you know, and the comprehensive plan isn't the council's idea. It's what the community tells us we have to do for the next 20 years. It took us years to put that together. And it is in the mixed commercial residential, nine to 20-plus dwelling units per acre. This district is meant to support a mixture of housing densities and commercial uses that are not automobile-dependent and serve as a buffer between high-intensity commercial uses and lower-density residential neighborhoods. In this district, housing, jobs, retail, and service-related uses will be within proximity to each other, offering residents the ability to live close to their jobs. This category focuses on an appropriate blend of these uses, seeking to balance of commercial and residential, where no single type dominates the given area. This category reflects the continued trends that seek to integrate residential and non-residential development in a walkable setting, places where transit is available and provides alternate circulation opportunities. This future land use category benefit from a subarea and master planning efforts, as well as targeted walkable infill development. Appropriate uses within this district could include both vertical and horizontal mixed-use development, or focuses on walkability, and strong pedestrian connections to support pedestrian-friendly environment. This district should give medium-to-high-density residential development. Appropriate commercial uses would include clinic and health service-related uses, offices, professional services, hotel, lodge, and retail, institutional civic, and entertainment. I don't think replating to bigger lots meets any of those goals that is in the comprehensive plan that the citizens told us we should be doing for the next 20 years. So I'm going to oppose.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I'll.
Mr. Erickson?
Had, I intend to support the motion. Lot of discussion at the planning commission level. We had, you know, the goals in the comprehensive plan surrounding housing, as was noted, did come up as a discussion. This, and I think the next item may shed a little bit more light on this, but the uses intended, it's going to be a fourplex, good mix of housing, the 12plex, and then in addition to that, kind of a medical kind of use for the other items. So for those reasons, and as noted, the discussions from those in the planning commission, I plan to support.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So this is on the preliminary plat for the Creekside Community Development. Mr. Kramvik, is this just a regular motion? It's not a resolution?
That's correct, just a regular motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? We have a motion, we have a second to approve the preliminary plat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is item 10C, consideration of a conditional use permit for a boarding house on Northwest Third Street. Mr. Kramvik, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the purpose of the conditional use permit is to request to operate a boarding house on the second floor above a health center. The health center below would be used really just by residents of the entire complex. I believe there's going to be workout stations that were proposed, as well as a mental health center and a kind of a dietitian center in there. Appendix A Table uses permits the operation of boarding houses in TN2 district as a conditional use. In the commercial and general business use table, health centers are permitted use in the TN2 district. So according to section 515-6-2, definition of a boarding house is a building other than a motel or hotel for the compensation and by prearrangement for definite periods for meal or lodging provided by three or more persons, but not to exceed 20 persons. The applicant is proposing four rooms. Occupancy would be set by the building official and fire marshal, but would not be able to exceed that 20. The proposed boarding house plans, plan meets the required. The proposed boarding house plans, plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and is supported by the comprehensive plan. However, the applicant is requesting a parking deferment of two spaces, as the health center would only be used by residents of the apartment complex and boarding house. Planning commission did consider the conditional use permit request at its regular meeting on October 19th, and upon review voted unanimously to recommend approval as presented with conditions. City council can certainly add any other reasonable conditions to the property. As a recommended motion is to approve the conditional use permit for the operation of a boarding house at Lot 2, Block 1 in the proposed plat. PIN numbers of the current properties would be 41040505, 41040501, 41040502, 41040503, with the following conditions: approval of the final plat for this block, and also that the applicant and the city enter into a development agreement to be recorded against the subject property, which includes a clause requiring the owner to install the additional two parking stalls upon finding of the city that such additional parking stalls are necessary to accommodate the use. And I can certainly answer any other questions of the city council.
Is there any questions of the community development director as to this conditional use permit request? Mr. O'Day and then Mr. Erickson.
I have a few.
Well, take your time.
First one, there was a lot of discussion on trees as a screening, and then lighting in the parking lot. It was a little unclear about where that ended up in the end of the conversation as I watched through planning and zoning.
So by the end of the conversation, it was essentially that they would just have to meet the standards of the landscape ordinance with the tree planting. So they're typically on most sites when they're developing them, we, before final occupancy, we count the number of trees on there. I think they're attempting to save as many trees as possible on the site, so we don't require the actual trees typically to be posted on the plan until the end. But before certificate of occupancy would be done, trees would have to be counted. There would have to be one tree on essentially each boulevard, which would include Northwest Second Street as well. So there is a deciduous tree requirement for overstory, but there was no final requirement from the planning commission to keep a certain number of trees or to set a certain number of trees in the boulevard area.
Okay. The other part was the lighting in the parking lots. We have some pretty significantly sized parking lots, especially in that area, that would be pretty dark otherwise. Just as a safety concern, I think that's something the council should consider. I know you guys talked about it at the planning commission. The project itself is a healthcare center. That building, is that being built simultaneously? Is this a stage one, stage two, stage three? I don't know if these questions are more for you or for the developer.
So that may be a question for the developer. I'm not sure if the boarding house is planned, would be planned after the 12-plex. So there are only, the next CUP that will be heard will be for the, essentially, the 12-unit on the northernmost property. The applicant is not proposing at this time for the conditional use on the other 12-plex as conditional use permits do have an expiration of one year. So that may be a question for the applicant. I'm guessing the 12-unit apartment may be, maybe first, but she could certainly clarify that.
Yeah, but let's stop for a second. Was there anything on the, from the planning commission on lighting of the parking lots?
So the lighting of the parking lot, at this time, the applicant was not planning on lighting the parking lot. There's going to be some lighting on the buildings. If parking, or if the parking lot lighting were to be added, that would essentially be an expansion of use on the property, would have to come back before planning commission and city council to add those lights at a later time. So that would have to be done as an amended CUP on the site.
Thank you. You have the floor. The next one was the biggest one for me, back to the beginning, and I didn't hear it covered at all during planning and zoning. That was a maintenance plan for this whole project? The pictures on here look great. It looks, looks like, you know, the grass is always mowed and everything is great. But I didn't hear anything about who's doing that. It's a one-staff business, from what I gathered, and it's a lot of grounds to cover. So I don't know what that maintenance plan looks like. I don't know where the garbages are. I don't, I couldn't figure that out by looking at the map. So I'm curious as to what the maintenance plan is, because that's what we deal with on this side of the committee. I was a little unclear on the guidelines of who gets to live there. That was discussed a little bit. That's not of my concern as much as what this property is going to be maintained like. And then there was, there was discussion about revocable conditional use permits as opposed to the interim use permits that we have in a revocable trust with the police department overseeing those. I don't know where that conversation was a little, kind of confusing to me in the end. But those are, that's the list of things that I'm a little concerned about going into, finalizing what we're seeing here. Lightyear's beyond where it started, definitely. There's just still a few things that I'm looking at there.
Thank you.
First, the maintenance.
Mr. Kramvik, anything you wish to add to Mr. O'Day's concerns?
Yeah, I know Councilmember O'Day talked about interim use versus conditional use. So this one's listed as a conditional use, so a little bit different than the warming shelter. Warming shelter where you can, that's as an interim use, you can set a certain number of years before they would have to come back and reapply for it. Conditional use permits essentially stay with the land as long as they build it within a year. You know, if they break any of the conditions, that can be brought back before city council. I know the part about essentially if the chief of police has issues, it can be potentially brought before council. Planning commission did discuss that, and really, they would be required to get a rental license with this, and planning commission looked at it as if there were issues on it, there'd be a conduct on premises issue with the property, and then at that point, it follows a lot of the same criteria if there are potential issues, so they were good with that part.
Yes, what, all I'm getting down to is this would be a business, it'd be a rental business with a rental license, I do believe, and it would just be, it would be treated as every other rental in town is treated, as far as the maintenance code goes, as far as everything goes. And it is a bit more of an experiment compared to, you know, the traditional rental housing that we have throughout the city, because it is a different program. But it's going to be treated exactly the same, is what I'm gathering. Okay. Is there an answer about the maintenance plan?
There is no maintenance plan included with it. It's not really condition of the conditional use to include that, you know, but yeah, certainly could be a concern.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
Question I had, James, could you just reiterate too about the parking deferment and why, in staff's recommendation, you felt that that would be warranted? There's discussion about the 12-plex and the parking there versus having to add those at the health centers that...
Yes, so I know the planning commission looked at the entire site. I believe there's 29 parking spaces at the 12-plex units, as well as 29 spaces at the other proposed one, primarily used by just residents on the site. So planning commission, I believe, did take that into account to look at, recommending the parking deferment on there, because the health center would just be used by residents on site there.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the conditional use permit for a boarding house on Northwest Third Street? Hearing none? I apologize?
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion. Okay. So we're looking for a motion. Mr. Erickson?
Mr. President, I would move to approve with conditions.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Stengline. Now we can discuss the motion. Chairman Johnson?
You know, the parking deferment is like the only thing I've agreed with so far. Look at all of those parking spots. My heart breaks for Kingwood Street. This is, this is what we want TN2 to look like? This is TN2? This is Kingwood Street of the future? I don't see it that way. I don't think that was the intent of anybody involved in the rezoning process.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? So this is on the conditional use permit for a boarding house. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries, four to three. Next up is item D, considering a conditional use permit for a 12-unit apartment on Northwest Third Street. Mr. Kramvik?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the purpose of this conditional use permit request is to construct a residential 12-unit multifamily apartment building. This would be for the northernmost parcel in the proposed preliminary plat. The applicant is proposing eight 430-square-foot efficiency units, two 910-square-foot two-bedroom units, and two 1,040-square-foot three-bedroom units. The proposed 12-unit apartment meets the requirements of the zoning code and is supported by the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did consider the conditional use permit during its regular meeting on October 19th, and upon review voted unanimously to recommend approval as presented with conditions. Recommended motion is to approve the conditional use permit for the construction of a 12-unit multifamily apartment at Lot 1, Block 1 in the proposed plat, which would be PIN numbers 41040505, 41040504, 41040503, contingent upon city council approval of the final plat for this block, and with the condition that the parking lot landscaping standards are applied also along Northwest Second Street on the east side. And I could certainly answer any other questions.
Any questions of staff or Mr. Kramvik and/or Mr. Kramvik on the conditional use permit for a 12-unit apartment on Northwest Third? Hearing none, will look for a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. President, I would move to recommend approval with the conditions recommended.
Second.
We have a motion by Erickson, a second by Stengline. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Chair?
I'll be voting no. I don't think, I think it takes a ridiculous amount of cognitive dissonance to think this is the type of development the comprehensive plan was calling for for the future of Brainerd. This is not walkable. This is a giant parking lot in the middle of a TN2 neighborhood, Kingwood Street and Oak Street, we're setting a precedent to just let Kingwood be leveled for excess parking. I don't think that's a good idea. We know TN2 was not this. That was to be connecting communities, not isolating with barriers and white razor wire around it. So I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Chair?
I'm going to vote yes on this, because a 12-unit apartment is what I was looking for. It's not the ideal thing that I was looking for. But where we're at right now, that's what we're left with.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the conditional use permit. We have a motion by Erickson, a second by Stengline. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to item 10E, a special, set a special meeting to canvass the 2022 general election results. Connie Hillman, do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, so this, we, per state law, we have to, the city has to canvass the results of the general election between the third and tenth day of the election. That would be no late, earlier than November 11th and no later than November 18th. However, we cannot hold a special meeting on Friday, the 11th, so that leaves the 14th through the 18th. So this item is on the agenda to determine who is able to meet, to canvass the election results, because we need a forum to set the time and date. Staff's recommendation would be to hold the special meeting on Wednesday, November 16th at 12 o'clock, and then to adjourn this meeting to the special meeting to canvass the results.
Any questions of staff? Does anybody like to make a motion for Wednesday, 11:10? At what time, Connie?
I suggested noon.
Noon, right here?
Yes.
Or something else, if you'd prefer. We need to set that meeting, so we need a motion.
Mr. President, are you, the 10th or the 16th?
16th, I apologize. I said 10th. Thank you. So staff is recommending November 16th at noon in chambers. Is there a motion to set that canvassing meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Stengline, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. We will adjourn this meeting to that meeting. All right. Next up is 11, public forum. Time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We'd like to keep it to a couple of minutes. If you're in the audience, please come to the microphones, state your name and address. It's 9:15. We will open the public forum. If you're online, star three notifies us that you're interested in speaking. The public forum is open at 9:15. Please step forward if you have something you'd like the council to hear. Second call, if you'd like to speak to the council. Now's your time. And a final call at 9:16, we will close the public forum. Next up is staff reports. We'll start over with our human resources. None? Fire chief? Nothing from the attorney? Anything from the attorney? Anything else from community development?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So just wanted to update council that there will be two items on the next planning commission meeting. First discussion will be the allowable lighting temperature for outdoor lighting. This will be just discussion on this one for possible new code language. The second item will be holding a public hearing for code language related to the moratorium passed by city council, which was for the conversion of dwelling use to green space or surface parking in residential zoning districts. Just also want to let city council know as well, at the last planning commission meeting, they did review the industrial district building standards. So right now, there are two building standards for the industrial buildings in that district. The first is for industrial properties along our major thoroughfares. This is similar to Anderson Brothers, that only allows 25% metal paneling on the entire building. The second was a standard in the other properties, which are off of our major thoroughfares, where you can only have 50% metal paneling on the street side of the building. This is similar to the new FedEx building. So planning commission did discuss these two items and believe the code language was correct and should remain with the two items. And that is all.
Thank you. City engineer, public works director, Jesse Dean?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things for you. Recently, we had a request from MinDOT to provide a letter of support. They are applying for a federal grant for some rail improvement funds for the highways 371 and 210 interchange, the proposed interchange. So that will be brought to the next council meeting for your review and recommendation, as well as the police department cold storage building on Thesi should be just about ready for occupancy maybe next week, give or take. And then, I just wanted to quick thank some of our public work staff. We're pretty busy today prepping for the big day tomorrow, so.
Thank you. Finance director, Hillman?
Yes, tomorrow is election days. Polls are open in the city from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And again, a special thank you to the Streets Garage that delivered all the election supplies and, and then went out and got some stuff that we mistake, left there by accident and brought it back in, so they have been working very hard today, so I thank them very much.
Thank you. John, G.I.S.I.T.?
Nothing.
Anything from the police department?
Nothing.
Nothing? And it's city administrator, Bergman?
Just quickly, the EDA did meet last week and adopted their goals and objectives or action steps, also reached out to the consultants that provided services for the EDA last year to begin negotiating those agreements in the upcoming year, as well as then bringing back the city of Brainerd's agreement with the EDA as well. We decided to hold off on that until we had the other consultant agreements to present to the EDA all at one time, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Well, first of all, I just want to start off by saying that I had an opportunity to vote early, and so I want to thank the county for the process that was that. Went very smoothly. I voted for some of you. I did not vote for others. Just kidding. So, but I just want to say, it was an enjoyable experience. So get out there and vote. Three things. Water Tower, you've seen it, the construction is actually happening. I don't know if you've seen the photos that are happening in there. Completely different space up in that, up in that bowl. It's, it's got a roof. It's coming. Here we go. Secondly, Halloween. Secondly, Halloween. I am now a resident of North Brainerd sadly. Northeast still has my heart, but I'm a resident of North Brainerd, and during Halloween, I am very proudly a resident of North Brainerd, because it is a fantastic experience to just be able to walk out the door with the kids, go down to Franklin, go through that whole building with all the artists who get really into it as well, and then head along the North Brainerd neighborhood, including Bluff, which, I don't know if you've been to Bluff, once it gets dark. My, as my four-year-old said, "We're going to the house with the smoke." And you look at Bluff, and all the houses have smoke, and it's amazing. Strobe lights, smoke. Kevin Jaeger, calm down on the screaming. There was a good recording of blood curdling screaming, so that was really good. But that turns into, very quickly now, Christmas is on its way. So there are some activities that'll be coming up. At Gregory Park, we're going to have some caroling this year, and then also sleigh rides or hay rides, I believe, again, in the East Bank neighborhood over by Buffalo Hills. So just now that Halloween has passed, we got to start thinking Christmas.
Did you forget Thanksgiving this year?
Does it look like I forget Thanksgiving?
Well, you jumped right over it.
Well, I'm just trying to lose a little weight.
Gobble, gobble to you. Is the mayor's residency in North Brainerd conditional?
I'm one, I'm one block into north, and I want to, I want to have the lines redrawn.
Trust me, so does everybody else. Tiffany Stengline?
Nothing for me.
Kevin Stunek? Chairman Johnson?
Nothing for me. The mayor covered it perfectly.
Tad Erickson?
Well, as at lar, an at-large member, I'll say I think all the neighborhoods in, in town do a great job with Halloween, from downtown, trick-or-treating on Saturday. North Brainerd, yes, but Grayden and South Brainerd, I think we had a great time as well. So, yeah, wherever you go in town for Halloween, always a good time. Everybody comes out, has a great time, especially downtown. Thought that was great. So other than that, thank you to all our poll watchers. Again, reference the big day tomorrow, but again, thanks for all the poll watchers and election judges. That's it for me.
Mr. Beazer?
I have only one thing, and that's to say, I completely forgot to bring all my information. I had my first meeting with the Library Committee a couple of weeks ago. There were a few things that I wanted to, a few things that I wanted to bring up or mention coming out of that meeting, and I completely forgot all that paperwork at home.
First time that's ever happened.
We'll do it again next time.
Never happened before. Mr. O'Day?
I just want to get a conversation started. I know we talked about the Special Services District today.
It's on the agenda.
That's okay. It's not public forum.
Trying to censor me.
Pay no attention to the man over there.
I never do. Try not to. One of the big things that, it comes up with the Special Services District is not just the snow removal, but the gardens downtown. And I want to start a program where, first, we give opportunity to the downtown businesses to adopt a garden. I believe we have 23 gardens, small gardens. 21 or 23. Every time I count on a map, it's 21 or 23. So either, either give downtown businesses first, first dibs on adopting a garden, and that would just be planting the plants. After that, we'll figure out the way that we get it watered. We're thinking maybe the Parks Department will water from now on. But I think we could do better with those gardens. We're doing great with the flowers and the urns and everything, but I think we could really clean those up. I think if the downtown businesses don't take all of them, I think council members maybe should step in and adopt a garden. I was doing some extreme gardening yesterday in the wind. Tad, Tad came by. He was door knocking. It was great. We were the only two people out in the entire town. But I don't mind doing a little gardening. I don't know about you guys, but I think we can clean that up, and it's been a challenge these last couple of years, but I think if we did that, we could up our game in downtown a little bit. That's all. They're in the ground, yes.
Mikey Green Thumb? And all I have to report on is Tuesday, November 16th, at 6:30 at the Center, the Brainerd-Norside Residents Association will be meeting, and as a measurable success, 1,430 pieces of candy went out my door on Monday on Halloween.
How many of them did you eat?
No, that does not include the ones that I ate.
How much did the mayor take?
Yeah, he was there.
Couple times.
Item 15 is we're going to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategy. Will we come back into open session if there's any motions because of that? They'll happen then, but then we'll also be adjourning the council meeting to the Wednesday, 11:16, 6:00 p.m. meeting in Chambers. Oh, no, noon. Noon to, to canvass the election results. So is there a motion to adjourn to the closed session? Motion by Stunek, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are in closed session in five, four, two...